Welcome, everybody, to tonight's Committee of the Whole for July the 16th, 2019. The council should have the minutes from the Committee of the Whole from our previous meeting on July the 2nd. Are there any corrections? If not, do I have a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the minutes carry from our July the 2nd Committee of the Whole. Colliers House Discussion. Mayor Pro Tem Beth Whitten and Councilperson Brett Smith asked for this discussion tonight. So City Manager, if it's all right with you, we'll just go ahead and let them begin the discussion. Okay. The fours, y'alls.
Thank you, Mayor. So Councilperson Smith and myself got together and we're really just interested in the public's desire to protect the Colliers House, which is part of a development that will change the landscape of the area that it currently sits. And so there's been a lot of discussion about if the city can be a part of protecting the house, what those steps look like. So really wanted to, and Councilmember Smith can certainly weigh in as well, but we wanted to get the council's consensus to give the city manager a direction to have staff look at what it would actually take to move that house and some options. Is that a completely public scenario where the city moves it to a public piece of property? We rehab the house and make it an asset for the community? Or is it in partnership with a private individual, so it's a public-private partnership? And what does that look like? Is that even an option? And then, third, what the costs associated with the options are? And are those costs the best use of taxpayer dollars? And I don't believe that the council can really make a decision until we know those things. So it was our desire to have the council discuss that, determine if we think the staff should use their resources to bring back those options to us so that we can make a decision. And time is of the essence because that house is slated to be part of a development, I think, as early as, well, the beginnings of redeveloping that corner as early as possibly the first of the year. So you have anything you want to add?
Well, and I want to echo what Mayor Pro Tem says. The house being personal to my business for the last five years as a tenant, there's substantial history in the home. You know, I feel it's, you know, there's been a lot of, and I know staff has done a substantial amount of work as it is currently now, Mayor. And they've been taking phone calls and working with private entity and seeing options. And, you know, me and Beth thought, you know, it's our duty, I think it's our job or due diligence, to do our due diligence to provide some options to the public. If you look at the history of the home when it was built, the connection to the university, what it has been through time, it's been a law firm, a coffee shop. The university had it for a while. It's been a private home for many years. I think we would be, I think it's a good idea. Now, the question is, what does the public have as an appetite when we get to a price tag? I think that'll be another question. I know that we're, my law firm is in a lease for the property until September 30th. And so from that point forward, I don't know. I know that it's privately owned now, the home is privately owned now. And I know that from a legal standpoint, we probably would have issues contributing certain tax dollars towards a private, completely private relationship or transaction. And so I just, I'd hope, and I think back on what Beth said, I would hope the council would feel the same, that it would behoove us as a council, especially for the rich history that our town has and that home does, to explore some price, to look at what that price would be and just get some options and bring that to the public.
Well, I appreciate y'all's efforts. So what the council will be considering here shortly will be asking the staff, led by the city manager, to do some research and to do some due diligence, which is their time that they would be doing other things to do on behalf of this project and to provide us some information. It goes without saying that this house is a house that was built and has been lived in by a family that's been very meaningful to the city for hundreds of years. And they were builders, they were part of the rich agricultural history that we have here as a community. And it's one of a few that is remaining, particularly on the southern part of our community. And so if you look at the Comp Plan 2030 and if you look at Auburn 2020, there's language in there about the sensitivity and the responsibility that the city has for older structures. There's nothing definitive in there that tells us what to do, but it certainly tells us that I believe it's right for us to inquire, to see what the opportunities are, to see what the options are, and to see what role the city can play in this type of decision. So anyway, I would personally believe it's a good use of our time. But tonight is not the time for us to deliberate on that and discuss the pros and cons tonight. It's really just to decide whether each of us feel like that this is an important use of the staff's time to do some due diligence, some fact finding on behalf of the council, bring it back to us, and then we would have a discussion either at a Committee of the Whole, or we could have a separate workshop, and we can discuss all the pros and cons and really get into the weeds on this.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Okay, before, you know, we even consider whatever it is. Are we trying to bring it back to the council to decide on, should the city move it or should, are we bringing it back? Are they going to be deciding on, should the city move it or other options?
I think we would ask the staff to kind of bring us all the options that are there.
Okay. So all of it, both of it?
In fairness, there are private sector individuals that are looking at the house, that are evaluating the cost of moving the house and making those determinations. And I would encourage anybody from the private sector that's interested in doing this to talk to the owner of this house if they think that that's something they would like to do. But there could be a scenario where there's a participation, or there could be a scenario where we towed a lot of the freight as the city. So that would be some of the information that we would like to ask the staff to bring back to us, Ms. Taylor, and be part of our decision making.
Okay, one more ignorant question.
Oh, all questions are good.
Brett, please forgive me. Did you just say that that's where your law firm housed it?
It is, yes, ma'am. I've been under a-
Inside of the house?
Yes, ma'am. Our lease is, yeah, weekend.
And I'm so sorry on the way your law firm-
I've enjoyed it on Saturdays. I've enjoyed working there, but on Saturdays before football games, it's amazing. So it's a great location.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions or thoughts from the council? Okay. Is everybody good with asking the city manager to spend some time doing some research and doing some fact finding for the city council on this and then bring it back to the council at a designated time? Is everybody good with that?
I'm good.
Okay. Everybody's nodding their heads and affirmative, city manager bustin', so we would like to ask you to lead the charge on that and provide us some information. And we can discuss a timeline on that and when would be appropriate. You might have some thoughts tonight.
Time is short, so we understand that we need to get back to you as quickly as we can.
Sure.
Because I believe we need to make a decision by the end of September.
Correct. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Good. Okay. Green Space Advisory Board, Mayor Pro Tem, Whitten.
Yes, sir. We have two vacancies. Terms begin August the 8th, 2019, and end August the 7th, 2023. We have two incumbents. One has served two full terms, one was filling out a partial term. Neither incumbent reapplied. So we had five applicants. And for the first seat, held by Richard Brinker, who's already served two full terms, I would like to nominate Marley Halter. And then for the second seat, currently held by Tyler Adams, I would like to nominate John Martin.
Do we have a second for Ms. Halter?
Second.
All right. And do we have a second for Mr. Martin?
Second.
Okay. So we have two nominees for the Green Space Advisory Board. Are there any other nominations from the council?
And we'll need to do those one seat at a time.
I got you.
So for the first seat, and I kind of got ahead of myself, but let's just take the first seat, Marley Halter.
Okay. So this vote right now will be on Ms. Halter. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Ms. Halter will be appointed later on in the agenda. And then for Mr. John Martin, all in favor, Mr. Martin, please say aye.
Are there any other?
Are there, excuse me. Thank you. Are there any other nominations for the second seat?
I'd like to nominate Leslie Beedles, Beedles, please. Not sure how to pronounce that. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Kelly. Any other nominations? Okay, we'll do this by, why don't we raise our hands on this one? Okay?
Mayor, you will need a second for that nomination.
Okay, thank you very much.
I second it.
Okay, thank you. And we do have a second for Ms. Beedles. Thank y'all very much. Okay. So first of all, we'll vote on Mr. Martin, and we'll do this by raising your hand, okay? All right. All in favor of Mr. Martin, please raise your hand. All in favor of Ms. Beedles, please raise your hand. Mr. City Manager, from here?
It's a tie.
Unless someone wants to change their vote, then someone else needs to be nominated.
We can suspend this.
It's suspended.
Could we suspend and-
We could.
Look at this at a date certain or suspend it?
We could suspend it to the next meeting, and you could, we could address it again. One, you've already addressed one. We would then look at the second one.
How about reopening for applications if we table it or suspend?
If we reopened up for applications, we would have to then have a longer time period. We couldn't do it at the next meeting.
Could we move to reappoint the partial term Tyler Adams without an application?
I'm sorry?
Could I move to reappoint Tyler Adams even though we don't have an application for him?
That's y'all's decision. I mean, not based on the rules that you set up, which are flexible, that I don't think that would be in keeping with what you were trying to do.
Just asking.
I think I can make it easy. I'll change my vote for Ms. Beedles.
Okay.
Can we open up for discussion before?
Yeah, that'd be fine. Let's open this up for discussion. That'd be great. Anybody like to discuss Mr. Martin?
Well, Mr. Martin has a wealth of time spent in this community, has held leadership positions in various civic and nonprofit organizations, and I believe has the city of Auburn in its best interest and would make, I would believe, make sound decisions with regard to green space and indicated so his desire to pay his civic rent on his application.
Okay. Anybody else for Mr. Martin? Any discussion on Ms. Beedles?
The one question I had about Ms. Beedles, I think she had listed an Opelika address on her application. I don't know if that would affect the vote this evening or if that was an error. I don't, can we get confirmation on if she's residing in Opelika?
According to her application, she does live in Opelika. I do know that she works in Auburn.
So is that going to make a difference according to what we-
According to the Green Space Advisory Board, that is not, your voting record, your record of voting is not a qualification for this board. It is for some, so address is important for some. And there's just been discussions in the past by this body that, you know, we want to maintain autonomy with those who are within the city and/or in the planning jurisdiction.
I'd like to point out that Ms. Beedles is the, either is currently or has been the former director of the Auburn University Arboretum. And so I think that speaks highly of her qualifications for this type of position.
I would agree with you, Kelly.
And I'll acknowledge, you know, that she does live in Opelika, and I think that is something to consider, you know, and we've all talked about that, you know, on quite a number of occasions. Morgan did grow up in Auburn on Thatch Avenue, went to Auburn High School, has a horticultural degree from Auburn University, and worked at the Arboretum. So I would support Morgan, you know, in her efforts there because of her ties to town. And she does live outside of the city limits, and that's certainly something to consider. But I think her, you know, other qualifications override.
I think this gets to the heart of, yeah, and this gets to the heart of our original conversations when we were going through the boards and commissions process, that leaving the door open for the best qualified candidate is what we are tasked to do and provide. So, I mean, certainly, I think it's all worth considering, and I think when we vote, it's important to note that we are tasked to find candidates who are, we feel are going to be the best. And certainly, all five candidates would make a great board member. It's just we're tasked with finding who we feel would be the best served.
Okay. Okay, so Jim, just repeat the process again. Is that the proper way to do this? So just vote on Mr. Martin and Ms. Beedles one more time?
Based on Councilperson Dawson saying that he wished to change his vote.
Okay. All right. So we'll go ahead and repeat the process. So all in favor, once again, please raise your hand. All in favor of Mr. John Martin, please raise your hand. All in favor of Ms. Beedles, please raise your hand.
Somebody else changed their mind.
Sorry. Wanted to change there.
All right. Well, I think at this point in time, we've had two votes, and they both ended up in a tie. Maybe we suspend the process. Is that the formal way to do this, Jim, until the next meeting? And then carry this forward to the Committee of the Whole at our first meeting in August?
We could.
Is that okay? So does I need a motion for that or, excuse me?
Can I move before we do that?
Absolutely.
And I'll just see how this flies.
You're trying to make the work cage.
So Mr. Adams filled in for, I believe, Mr. Hovey's position, and he hasn't served a full term, Tyler Adams, this council originally voted on. Talking with him, I don't know that he was quite aware of the reapplication process, so that's something to kind of strike against him, not reapplying. He didn't fulfill a full term, but we know we have, we had previously voted and found him to be worthy of that position on the board. So in saying that, before we move to delay time, I'd like to nominate Mr. Tyler Adams for this open position.
I'd like to move that we suspend our rules.
Why, I need to do that first because of the application process?
Correct.
But even though, wasn't the residency process part of the rules as well?
No.
No.
Okay.
So you would be moving to suspend our boards and commission rules in order to nominate Tyler Adams?
I so moved. I moved to suspend our rules to nominate Tyler Adams for this position.
I second that.
Okay. So do we need to vote on that? So all in favor of suspending the rules so that Mr. Adams can be nominated, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Nays have it. All right. So we will not suspend the rules. So we've got two votes. We've got a couple of people that have been nominated. We voted twice, and it ended up in a tie. So I would think, counsel, that the best thing to do is suspend this vote until the next meeting in August. And maybe we'll have an odd number of council members here that night, if that's okay. So I will make a motion that we suspend the vote on the second member of the Green Space Advisory Board until the first meeting in August at the Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we'll do that first meeting in August. All right. Ms. Whitten, Library Board.
Yes, sir. We have one vacancy. It's an unexpired term beginning immediately and ends April the 14th, 2021. And for that term, I would like to nominate Bonnie McEwan.
Second.
Are there any other nominations from the council?
I would like to nominate Carol Harrison.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have two. Are there any other nominations from the council? Okay. Discussion.
Mayor, I'd like to point out Ms. Bonnie is a retired dean of Auburn University Library. I think she's highly qualified and is a really good candidate. I was very impressed with the people that put in for this position. Very good candidate, but I think that puts her above the rest of the crowd. Best experience in the library field.
Okay. Thank you. Tommy, any other comments regarding any of the candidates here tonight?
Yes, I spoke with Carol Harrison a couple of weeks ago, and she shared her love with me about the library and how she would like to be more involved. She's been involved with Kiwanis Club, Lee County Literacy Coalition, Lee County Realtors Association, and she's, I believe she'd be a great person to get involved with the city. She's not been on a Board or Commission yet within the city, and I think it would be a great fit for her to start.
Okay. All right. Any other comments from the council? Okay. Ms. Whitten, would you spell the last name of the nomination?
Bonnie McEwan, M-A-C capital E-W-A-N. I may be pronouncing that incorrectly, but McEwan.
McEwan, okay. All right. So we'll vote just like we did just a second ago. If you'll please raise your hand. So all in favor of Ms. Bonnie McEwan, please raise your hand. So Ms. McEwan got five votes, so she will be nominated for the Library Board. Okay. Questions on the agenda for City Manager Bustin?
Mayor, we do have one changed on the agenda. We need to remove item 10B from the agenda. That obligation to the city has been satisfied.
Is it B or D?
B, as in boy. 10B.
Any other questions for the city manager?
Oh, I am in on D.
Questions on the agenda for the city manager? Okay. If not, I have moved to adjourn.
Same.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we are adjourned. We will not start our formal meeting until 7:00. So there is a little time here, okay? Thank you.
All right.